This is Artful Discourse, your weekly escape into the vibrant world of creativity, culture, and intellectual exploration. I'm your host Benjamin Kirk, and I invite you to join me on a journey through the rich tapestry of human thought and the beating heart of artistic expression at Fresno State's College of Arts and Humanities. And today we're talking to an alum of the College of Arts and Humanities, Delano Councilmember Salvador Solorio Reese. He's the son of immigrants, a first-generation college student. He attended Fresno State. He received his Bachelor of Arts in Communication. Then after graduating, he returned to his hometown of Delano because he says he felt an obligation to help build the community that raised him in Kern County. He is now the youngest council member in Delano. He became a council member less than two years after he graduated. Sal hopes to inspire others to get civilly engaged and create a prosperous life for Central Valley families. In addition to being a council member for the city of Delano, Sal is a project coordinator with the California Health Collaborative. That's a nonprofit funded by the California Department of Public Health. And so he's really involved in educating communities on tobacco prevention. So Sal, welcome.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you.
All right, so let's start off. What do you love about communication? What drew you to that major at Fresno State?
Of course. So funny story, actually. I entered Fresno State with the idea of wanting to become a nurse. And I found out very quickly that I was not so great at science or even math. And so I said, you know what? What else can I do? I went to speak to one of my advisors and she pitched the department, and of course, the major of communication. And after she pitched it, she gave me a synopsis of what I can do in the future and talked about my strengths that she sees. And I think overall, I don't regret it at all. Communication has completely changed my life and the way I communicate and the way I present myself in spaces. It's really developed me as a leader.
So how did your Bachelor of Arts in Communication from Fresno State prepare you for your role as Delano City Councilman in Delano? And also you're Delano's Vice Mayor right now, right?
So I was a former Vice Mayor, but now a council member. And overall, it really prepared me. I think number one, I want to give a huge thanks to the professors and instructors that really helped me along the way. Dr. Karch, Dr. Blair, you know, Dr. Jones. Fantastic individuals in the Communication Department who really transformed my thinking process. Even after I graduated, I was still in touch with them and sent them updates of what I was doing. And so it really, I think, one of the things that we hear a lot about nowadays that employers want is the ability to have soft skills and which a lot of folks unfortunately do not have, which is the basics of communication. And so all of those professors that I listed have really, they showed me what it really means to engage in not only communication, but the rhetoric that folks use. Rhetoric is important as we see in the local, the national level. What you say matters. And so at times, it can determine a policy outcome. And so, or it can determine, of course, how you sell yourself to the community. And when I say sell yourself, I mean in terms of appealing. People want to see someone in these roles and say, I can relate to them. And if you can't get your message across, if you do not know how to present yourself, if you don't know how to speak properly in terms of, of course, what I've learned in communication, it's going to be very difficult for you to be successful in these roles. I really do believe that. But overall, I don't regret at all engaging in this major. You know, I even get told now, I get asked, you know, what did you do in college? What did you major in? And it's for some people, I think it's a little odd. You know, I remember when I told my folks the first time, they were like, wait, what? You're getting your Bachelor's in Communication? And even folks nowadays are just like, what is that? And then some are even like, oh, well, duh, you know, you know how to speak. And I'm like, okay, you know, so it's been a pretty engaging just time in communicating to folks of what communication really is all about.
Yeah. And I've heard people question that major as well and kind of say, well, what do you do with that? But really, when I've looked at across the alumni, the people who have graduated with that major, some very successful people, a lot of leadership roles.
Absolutely. Absolutely, Benjamin. Because I think that the major of communication, the studies of communication is much more bigger than just one title. You can do, I remember when I was speaking to my advisor, I'm like, but what can I do with that? She goes, you could do a lot. And so of course, I am a councilman for the city of Delano. I've been there since 2020. Just won reelection recently. Ran for the Kern County Board of Supervisors, was unsuccessful. But overall, the Communication major that I studied, it completely transformed my outcome, I think, in the way that I'm able to communicate. Even folks that, you know, community folks that I speak to, they go, you know what? You really know how to speak. And you know, and I think that, of course, communication is bigger than just speaking. It's listening. It's the type of, it's not just talking just to talk, but it's the rhetoric that we use on the side as well for my full-time job. Because of course, City Council does not pay the bills. I do work for the California Health Collaborative. It is a nonprofit organization focused on public health, in particular tobacco prevention. I've been there since, for about five years as well, four to five years. So I do that as well on the side. We do, and of course, I use communication there as well. We do tobacco presentations, community outreach, things like that.
And actually, you kind of read my mind. That was going to be my next question about your work with the California Health Collaborative. Can you tell me a bit more about that?
For sure. Yeah. So I've worked in the tri-county region of Kings County, Tulare County, and Fresno County. We work with young people, engaging them in policy efforts. So what we say, of course, we cannot lobby, but we go into community and we educate young people and community leaders about the issue of tobacco. But I always say it's much bigger than tobacco. As much as that is the issue that we're there to educate on, we, what I try to do is really empower the young people to, and I give the example, that we're not only educating young people on tobacco, but if they see a broken light at the corner of their street, who to talk to, how to approach their elected officials? You know, what is a city council? What is a Board of Supervisors? What's an ordinance, a resolution? So we do educate on policy. And I think that's so important because oftentimes, and I know I didn't have that growing up, is we don't know the role of local government or government period. And we think we have illusions of what it's there for. But oftentimes, as young people, we don't know who our elected officials are, especially even older folks. You know, you walk down a street and you knock on a random door, you ask, who's the mayor? Who's the council? You know, and I bet you some of them are going to be like, ah, don't know. And so we really try to educate our young people about engaging more in their community and being publicly engaged and politically engaged.
I want to drill down a little bit further as far as your, what you learned at Fresno State and how you apply it to your professional life. Are there any specific skills or lessons that kind of come to mind on a daily basis, on a regular basis?
Yeah, absolutely. I remember in Dr. Blair's class, I remember learning about, you know, American public discourse and the leaders that we learned about from MLK to Malcolm X to just a variety of different folks. And engaging in really identifying the rhetoric that those leaders use and the importance of that rhetoric. I remember one time when I was sitting, and this is something that I always remember, is I was sitting in class and I raised my hand and I told Dr. Blair, you know, MLK was peaceful compared to Malcolm X. And she was just like, let's engage in the rhetoric. Peaceful is not the right word to use. And so we dig more deeper into, you know, it's disrupting the system is not peaceful. And so I engaged in that. And that's something that I always remember from leaders like that. I remember being in Dr. Karch's class and engaging in gender studies. And it was, it was a really great engagement in learning about just, you know, the, you know, who we are as a species and just the differences in each of us. I remember being in Dr. Jones's class and also learning about rhetoric and the power of our rhetoric, rhetorical discourse. And so it's really, I use all of that even when I'm up on the dais and argue, and I don't want to say arguing, debating and sharing my opinions on a policy. I'm pretty good at it. Even when looking back at some debates that I've had when running for office, I would say that a lot of the comments that I hear is that, you know, I really, I excelled well because I don't, I don't come into a conversation defensive or even argumentative in terms of being a bully or name-calling. I attack the issue and we critique it and we assess it. And you know, nothing's perfect. No government, no entity, no issue is perfect. And so it's important to have an open mind and to really think outside the box and how we figure things out.
Yeah. Just to lighten things up just a little bit, do you have a favorite memory from your time at Fresno State?
A favorite memory?
Something that stands out?
You know, and I'm going to say this, I really miss the academic environment. The academic environment that those professors that I listed, the Department of Communication that they created was absolutely beautiful and inclusive. My voice mattered in class. And my voice, of course, matters now too. But it was, it's one thing that I miss that sometimes in the real world, it's not so much like the academic environment. In the academic environment, we're all there with the understanding that we're there to learn and to learn from each other. And sometimes in the real world, folks don't want to learn. They think they know it all and they think, hey, it's like, you know, it's like a dead horse that you beat. You just, you can't, you can't teach an old horse new tricks, as the saying goes, right? And so that's important to note because in the academic environment, I think that's a big memory that I have is, is I was able to raise my hand and say, hey, this is my two cents, and someone else would so too. And you wouldn't, people wouldn't get defensive. And I think that's so important to have an open mind, especially during these times that we're in where I think we should lower the temperature and find some commonalities amongst each other.
Kind of that open dialogue and that listening as well as talking.
For sure. Absolutely.
Yeah. Now, you have an incredible story. Your parents immigrated from Mexico, your father, a farm worker, your mother, a childcare provider, first-generation college student. So tell me a bit about your educational and your personal journey.
Yeah. So I, as you stated, I come from parents who were migrants, who immigrated from Mexico about 40 years ago with very little opportunity. And so I am the youngest of six and I was the first one to attend a four-year university. And it's really, it's bittersweet because you think back and I always say, you know, we're first, I'm a first-generation college student, but I'm also a first-generation politician because no one in my family has ever ran for office. And so when, one thing that I always say is that we need to make it easier for ordinary folks, even if you don't have an education, to be able to run for office because that is your right as an American citizen to do so. And so I think that when I was learning how to run for office, there's a lot of paperwork involved. There's a lot of paperwork involved, whether it's to file or even to raise money. And you need tons of it. And so all of those, all of that paperwork, of course, I had friends who've done it before, but oftentimes, you're the one who ends up doing it yourself. And so I had to learn all that. And so it's, it's really, you know, I think I've had some major challenges in my life that have really shaped who I am. Of course, I think we all go through it. We all go through adversity. You know, with, I know I share often, you know, that my family and I lost, one of my older sisters about nine years ago to gun violence. It was when I was in college that happened. And then also about two years ago, we lost my older brother. So life hasn't been super great in terms of just, of just love amongst each other and the adversity that we face. But with that said, my family, my mentors, you know, the professors that I listed have been mentors still. And they've taught me the power of resilience and the power of just not giving up and continuing to do what you do. And you know, even in the government world and politics, you know, it's also grueling. You have people who in the beginning were supportive and then next thing you know it, you know, you voted on something that maybe they didn't agree with, but you had, you know, and I'm speaking from personal experiences. You know, you vote on something that you think it's serving the community well and a group of people don't like it, you're going to piss people off. And ultimately, you can't please everyone. And you just kind of got to move forward with life and say, I am able to sleep at night with the decisions that I make for my community. And the other thing too, Benjamin, is the fact that I also ran for office at 24 years old. And there was a lot of challenges with that as well, a lot of naysayers. And you know, and I even say it too, there was a time in which, in the beginning, there was a group of folks who just didn't agree with me at all and didn't tolerate me as a young person in this role. Because of course, being young, sometimes people are like, well, who the heck do you think you are? You just came back from college. You don't know our community. And so, but now those, I've been able to really position myself to those same people that were critical in the beginning and the little naysayers. Now, now they came to my side and they understand, you know, the way that I govern. And I try to govern in a way that isn't left or right. Because this is local government. It's city council. It's not Congress. It's not, of course, the presidency or the United States Senate where it is partisan. This is nonpartisan. And it's important to be able to navigate through those, through those walls of power and to be able to lead in that way. But I've gone through many challenges. You know, if, I think if I didn't go to Fresno State, I probably wouldn't be sitting here as a council member today. I really do believe that. I think my life would have been completely different. And so I strongly believe in education. And you know, I always say, you know, a college education is one of the greatest equalizers in America. And I stand by that firmly. I really do.
I think in looking at your story, one of the things that's really amazing to me is that you graduated from Fresno State in 2019. I assume that was May?
Yes, I graduated May of 2019.
And a year and a half later, you're a city councilman.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Yeah, that's pretty crazy.
And you talked about the naysayers and everything else. It's really an amazing accomplishment. And to, yeah, how is that? How is that? How did it feel to win that first time?
It felt really, it felt great, you know. On election night though, on election night, I had, I had lost. And what I mean by that is similar to other counties, but really specifically to ours. Kern County takes like forever to count the votes. And so I was losing on election night. And then the next time they did updates, I was winning. And so on election night, I was defeated. I was like, I was, I was mad. I was like, God, you know, all the work I did, all the door knocking I did, it was difficult. But of course, after the second update, we won. And after that, we kept our spot to win a seat. And so it was, it, I, being a council member has been really one of the biggest privileges that I've had to have. And I'm so honored to be in this role. And I feel a great sense of responsibility to do well and to do it right because there are so many people that just have their eyes on you, whether they're for, you know, supportive or not. You know, we root for someone and immediately just one bad thing and negative thing. And you know, people want to cross someone. And it's important to be able as a young person in this role, like it's bigger than us. It's bigger than me. It's about my community. But it's also about other young people, you know, they, they're watching as well. And they're going to say, hey, I have the power to be in elected office too, you know, right after college. And so it's, it's a beautiful thing. And I really, even now, I encourage young people. I'm like, you want to run for office? You know, do it after, you know, graduating or, you know, or really prepare yourself to, for this role because you really have to have some thick skin.
Now, another thing you mentioned in your, a little bit ago, and I just kind of want to circle back to it, was that kind of that idea that you're not always pleasing everybody in your role. Which for me, I think that would be tough. I'm kind of a people pleaser myself. And how do you handle that? How does that, is it just that you try to do the best job you can and live with it? Or?
Absolutely. No, yeah. And you know, and I feel, I feel you, you know, I'm a people pleaser too. I want people to like what I do and to like the decisions that I make. But for an example, you know, right now, we're having conversations on, on which unfortunately, it's a controversial issue, which is to, how are we regulating food trucks in the city of Delano? And so the reason that it's controversial is because you have the local businesses, the mom and pop shops, you know, the brick and mortar restaurants that have approached me. And either, either some say, I don't want them near us, or some say, I don't want them in our city, period. And then of course, you have the food truck owners who are part of our community as well, who say, we have the right to own a business. We have the right to own an establishment, even if it is a food truck. And I think that they're both right. I think they both have valid points. And so my job and my role is I bring everyone to the table. You know, recently I had a meeting with the restaurant owners and I told them, hey, I'm going to try my best to make sure that we uplift our local businesses. But you also have to understand that this is America. And in America, you have the right to own a business. And the same way that, you know, our local businesses wanted to open up their own store. And of course, I'm not comparing the two because it's very different. But either way, there are people who spend thousands of dollars on food trucks, 50,000, 100,000. And so it's important for my role to kind of be in the middle to weigh both options and say, how can I make both happy? And they might both not be happy, but at least they'll be a little comfortable to say, you know what? I see where he's coming from. And to hope I made, I made the best decision for my community that impacts everyone. You really just have to outweigh all the costs, the pros and cons. You know, for the local businesses, one idea that I have that the city of Fresno, I believe, does it, is they have a buffer zone. So they, it's not saying no food trucks, period, in the city. It's saying, well, they can't be next to a brick and mortar within 300 feet. And so that's kind of saying to the food trucks, hey, you have your space here. You belong here in our city. We welcome business. But it's also telling our business owners, hey, for 300 feet, you're saved. You know, other than that, you're not. So you kind of have to come to the middle and negotiate and to really be able to make it, make sense to people of what it is. And I think that's a big thing too, Benjamin, is that if you don't know how to, when I talked about communicating and how we express ourselves and et cetera, this, the major of communication and the studies of communication have really taught me to express and to really, to share my point of view in a way that everyone understands. And afterwards, like, you know what? I see where he's coming from. That makes sense. And look, there's going to be times where you're just not going to make people happy. And I've dealt with it already. And you just kind of got to keep moving forward. You cannot make everyone happy. This is not McDonald's. You know, folks cannot have it their own way, even though it is their government. And I believe that they have every right to speak. And even if they are against what my opinion, or I'm against their perspective, but we can all come together and kind of hopefully find a middle ground. And if not, then you know, we have, we just have to live with what we decide.
It sounds very similar to kind of that academic environment that you were talking about earlier, that you kind of were introduced to at Fresno State.
Absolutely. And the thing is though, too, Benjamin, and I've witnessed it recently, is you, you know, as much as I learned the skillset that I have now through the Communication Department, through the courses that I took, I will say that for some people, it's wow, this young man speaks well, presents himself well. But for some, it's like, who does this young guy think he is? You know, he doesn't, he seems, I remember someone wrote after the recent debate that I had for City Council, I believe it was November or October, is they said that I was too polished. And I'm like, huh? Like, you know, in what world do we not want a, an elected official who is equipped with all the knowledge? You know, I'm not the, I'm not the young guy that I was when I entered at 24 years old. I've changed. I think I've gotten better. And so, and I've learned a lot. And so that's really what I came down to in that, in that debate. But again, I go back to the rhetoric that people are using. Sometimes, like I said, some folks, they love, you know, the, what I bring to the table. And some folks, I think they're just like, who does this kid think he is? You know?
How has your upbringing as the son of immigrants, being a first-generation college graduate, a first-generation politician, how has that shaped your understanding of the community needs and your approach to public service?
So that goes back to something that I, that I heard someone say a couple of years ago, which I really loved. You shouldn't, as much as it's important to get an internship in DC or in Sacramento, you shouldn't run for office because you did an internship in DC or Sacramento. You should run for office because you had a conversation with your neighbor because they were feared for their lives that they were going to get deported by ICE. So with that said, when I make decisions or when I talk to people in the community, I see my parents. I see my family. I see my siblings. You know, my little sister, of course, my little sister is my older sister who passed away. Her daughter, and she was raised as my sibling. And I see, I see her and other kids when I see them. You know, when we, when we offer free backpacks or haircuts or just different services that we've provided here in the city. You know, during the time of COVID, that's when I was elected as well. And I was a big leader on coordinating food distributions and on providing relief. Because again, I saw my family and other families. And I said, well, if I don't step up, who in the heck will? And I think that's oftentimes something that I think about. And I tell young people all the time, if not you, then who? Because there's sometimes, there's not, there's no who. There's no one else. It's you. Like you have to do it. I remember, you know, one time I was like, you know, oh God, you know, where are the adults in my life? I am the adult. Like I have to step in and I have to make tough choices and decisions that I'm going to live with for the rest of my life. And so it's, you know, you, it's bittersweet and you really have to think about the big picture. And again, I just, I think back to my community as my family is, I present myself in the community the same way that I'm talking to you. I'm very open. I'm very positive energy. Because I think, you know, one of the things that I, that I thought of when entering this, this world was people have a lack of trust in their government as it is. And that's okay to say, you know, people don't have trust in their government, whether it's local, whether it's state or even federal. People don't, don't trust their government. And so I asked myself, how can I combat that? And I gave myself the response is I combat that through showing up. I'm going to show up in community. I'm going to be in the grounds, doing the work. When I, when I first got elected, the budget was coming up. And I said, you know what? Let me go out there and knock on doors. And I told folks, I'm not knocking on your door for an election. I'm knocking on door to get your input of where you want the money to go to in the city. And I think that was so powerful because sometimes some of them were like, what? Like, you know, we usually only get a knock on our door from an elected official when it's election season. And I just don't think that that's how it should be. And so I combated that approach of being able to build trust in my community. And of course, I'm going to say that I think it definitely paid off because I was reelected out of, there was a total of about nine candidates. It was a tough race this previous November election. And I'm not going to lie, on election night, I was like, I was ready to lose. Because I said, you know what? People love change. That's why I got elected in 2020. People wanted change. And so the question that I had in 2024 was, have people saw that I made change? Do people know who I am? Do people have trusted me? And the answer was yes. They did. So I love it.
All right. What advice do you have for young people in your community who want to pursue college?
I would say if you don't know the ropes, if you have any, any questions or concerns on the, on the academic environment, there are people out there who can help you. There is, you know, even people you don't know at this moment. If you're hearing this, you know, there are people out there who, who want to take young people in, who say, you know what? Like, and that's what I tell some, some young folks even now. You know, I have a young guy who's always with me and his name is Alexis. He's a great kid. Like, and and that's what I tell some some young folks even now, you know, I I have a a young guy who who's always with me and his name is Alexis, he's a great kid. And uh, we um, I I told him one time, because I think we met, we met the Attorney General and and we met um, just different individuals and uh, in the political uh, world. And and every time we meet someone, I tell him, you know what? When you introduce yourself, ask them if they can mentor you. And I and I know it for them, for for these big leaders, you know, I think he he even tried to to ask the governor uh, when we, when we saw him a a couple of years back and and so, but for them, it's shocking because they're like, this young person is asking a a high-profile politi- political leader, you know, mentor me. And oftentimes, us as as young people, we think they're gonna shut us down, they're gonna say no, but sometimes they will say yes, you know, people want, they want to 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 guide young people and to make sure that, you know, uh, cause there's gonna be, there's gonna be future leaders after, you know, Donald Trump, there's gonna be future leaders after Kamala Harris, after Joe Biden. That's just the reality of things, after me, you know, and so it's it's, you you really have to think in that way as a leader and say, you know, reach out to folks to get mentorships and guidance. Um, I promise you, the other thing too is to understand that in in any table you are in, whether it's academic or not, know that you belong there and take up space. Feel free to take up space. Um, you know, even, you know, yesterday I was at a meeting and and I I was the only young person at at a new uh, board that um, that the council agreed to put me on. And I was sitting there and I'm like, I'm the only young person there. And and I looked around and there was a topic of discussion, it was my first meeting and I and I provided my two cents because I'm like, you know what, I need to take up the space as well. And my opinion matters because it's not my opinion, it's the community's uh, opinion, hopefully. And so, cause I'm speaking uh, uh, on behalf of my community. And so, but yeah, you know, reach out for mentorships, reach out to me. You know, I I don't have, you know, as much as I'm busy, I'm always more than happy to to talk to people and to talk to to students who are interested in getting in the academic space or even, you know, potentially running for office. We can definitely connect you with some folks.
Now, you're a young guy, you've accomplished a lot already, and I know you did run for for county supervisor, unfortunately unsuccessfully, but um, what's next for you? What are your goals?
Oh, Benjamin, that is a huge question that everybody always asks. Um, you know, I I was thinking about it, I'm like, you know, should I go back into the academic environment? Should I get my masters? Uh, should I get my law degree? I I I I'm really back and forth of where I wanna go moving forward because of course, um, I'm in city council, but city council doesn't pay the bills. I'm doing it for public service. Um, and so uh, i- if I run for office in the future, for higher office and potentially, but I always say that I'm gonna go where I'm most needed. And so if my community vocalizes and says, hey, you know what? We want Sal to run, let's say, run again for Board of Supervisors or run for for the Senate um, in the California Legislature or run for Assembly. Um, you know, or you name it, or even, you know, working for an administration, whether it's the governor's office or, you know, God willingly, maybe even, you know, one day um, yeah, in in the White House. And so uh, I think just, you know, keeping my options open, I'm good where I'm at now. I'm serving my community another four years. I have a good-paying job. Um, and I'm getting involved in my community and and for that, no one can take that away from me and and I just, I really love what I do. But of course, I am, I think one of the goals that I had this year is to is to plan, like, what is next? And I don't think what is next in terms of running for office. I think what is next in terms of, I think, the academic environment. I don't know if I wanna go back to school and and get my masters or you name it, but I need to really think about it and sit down with myself.
Yeah. Is there anything I missed, anything you'd like to add?
No, I think that that was, that was pretty, that was a pretty good conversation.
Yeah, I agree. That was, that was really enjoyable. Thank you so much for joining us today. Artful Discourse is a production of the College of Arts and Humanities, California State University, Fresno. The dean is Dr. Enora Chapman. This program is written, directed, and produced by me, Benjamin Kirk, the college's communication specialist. The theme song for Artful Discourse is Made in Voyage by Fresno State music professor Benjamin Boone from his album Joy. More information about his music to be found at benjaminboone.com. Special thanks to KFSR and FSR Underground General Manager Julie Lindell for making this show possible. You can learn more about the College of Arts and Humanities and find an archive of our shows at our website, ca.h.fresostate.edu or on our blog, fresostatecah.com.